I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, as we do each meeting, I'll start by mentioning our vision and mission statements. Our vision is inspiring all learners to be engaged and successful. Our mission, to provide an enriching environment to meet the needs of all learners. And then our core value, respect, integrity, students first, and excellence. So as we go through our agenda, please keep all that in mind. We'll start tonight with a public hearing on our 2021 budget amendment. We'll call that to order here at seven oh whatever two.
So the public hearing is to amend our current FY21 budget. We're increasing our total support services by a hundred thousand. Those extra expenses would be a result of COVID, COVID services, cleaning specifically. We added some hours into some of our custodial staff for that process. Our non-instructional programs will be increased a hundred thousand. That would also be COVID expenses of supplies, masks. In both cases, those are expenses that are funded through federal dollars, but it does increase our budget and what we're spending. Then the third increase is in our total other expenditures, which increased five hundred thousand. Again, that's all back to construction, specifically the new football field. So nothing, I guess, that we didn't know was going to come, just different numbers from what we certified last April.
We need to do this so that obviously when we get all they did, everything is correct.
Right, right.
Are there any questions? Either from the board or any questions? This is a public hearing. All right, hearing that, we'll close this public hearing. And we'll address that in the agenda down the road. All right, we'll start a regular meeting then. We need to approve the agenda. Are there any adjustments? I don't believe there was.
There was not.
Okay, then we need a motion for approve the agenda. Motion to approve agenda. Thanks, Brett. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thanks, Gloria. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I don't believe we have any. You all should have received the consent items. We'll go to that one earlier in the board packet last Friday, so I hope you had a chance to go over them. And I know, Andrea, you got to look at the invoices.
Everything looked good.
Good. We're all good there? They don't, but it's good that we get a chance to look them over. You said you might add.
There were four invoices in the activity that weren't on your sheet, and they were entry fees for golf tournaments or golf. And that totaled up to three hundred and twenty dollars.
Are there any questions with the consent items? Do you want to go over? Clarissa, will highlight if you want.
Those are the ones. I left early last week, so we went ahead and sent everything out as of Wednesday. But when I got back today, there were certain invoices in there like AMU and others that could not wait. So those are the ones that were added since you looked at them. If you looked at them, when was the weekend? Thank you for asking. Forgot.
All right, any further questions? Hearing that, we need a motion then to approve the consent items.
Make a motion to approve the consent items.
Thanks, Andrea. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. Todd, have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Consent items are approved. Communications to the board, none are listed. So we'll move into superintendent's report.
May is school board appreciation month, so there's some stuff for you guys. Some candies, some certificates. But we do want to thank you guys for your service to the district and to the community. Like the Association of School Board certificate says, through uncharted waters, it was not a normal year to be a school board member, not a normal year for anyone at all. But certainly appreciate your guys' guidance through those uncharted waters and everything that you've done for us in the last year. Summer Bash, which is our summer school for students in grades K through five, has fifty students enrolled and will take place at Bryant Elementary Monday through Thursday, June seventh through July second, from eight-thirty to eleven-thirty. Breakfast and lunch will be provided for students, as well as some transportation. Again, trying to do everything we can to help close any of those learning gaps and just develop skills that might not be developed in any student yet. We've started to get some initial ISAS information back. Not all of it, we'll have all that for you next month. But our third and fourth grade, which is the earliest two grades that take ISAS data, is very, very good. So that's, will be something interesting to look at, the whole scope and what it looks like. Our last day of school is Tuesday, May twenty-fifth. Students will be dismissed at eleven-thirty. There will be a luncheon to honor all of our staff and honor our retirees at noon in the high school commons. We have fourteen staff members who are retiring that day, eight teachers and six classified staff. We'll also be recognizing all staff at twenty-five years of service, and the class of nineteen-seventy-nine Teacher of the Year award will also be presented. So all of you are welcome to attend if you are able. Our new app, some work that we've done over the last few months. It is operable. Our release for the new app will be with registration and to start the new school year. But you can go to the Algonquin Community, or go to the web store or where you buy apps for Android, and you can purchase the Algonquin Community Schools app. That app looks like that, you can see it right there. Has the A on it. And when you go to it, I can go to the Algonquin Community School District, and I can go, we'll go to home, and it's got a feed of announcements that we've been made. We've been actually posting information on it for a number of months, so that when it was live, it would have stuff on it. I can go to events. It lists some events. This is golf, Boys Golf Today. I can hit the map, show me the map, it'll give you the map of where all that stuff is. I can go to Lucia Wallace Elementary. I'm on the events here, May twelfth, there's an early dismissal. May fourteenth, the third and fourth grade bullpup relays. I can look at the live feed for Lucia Wallace, some of their bulldog heroes that were posted from last Friday. Can look at the dining. This is for, you know, the breakfast for Tuesday, May eleventh. What are we having on Friday? There it is. I can contact a staff member there, all of them are, click on their name to email them. So it's very, very friendly, very easy to use, something that'll be quick for our people and a really good way for us to communicate, which was part of our intent in what we're doing here. If you go to our website now, it is all integrated with this. So you can go to the website, and it looks different. It's also very, very easy to use. But we really like how that stuff looks. And again, we have marketing push-out stuff that will, you know, we can give you a handout of how you go and get the app. We can give you a handout on how to sign up for notifications. We can get you a handout to sign up for just your child's school. That's all stuff that we'll push out to our people to start the year with registration. So it's going really well. Wanted to show you guys some of that stuff.
Who's responsible for putting all the information over there?
A lot of people. They do take your old website, and they integrate some of that information over. Our development of the app and some of that, administrators. Every building has one or two people also working on. I've put the lunch menu so far. Our food service people make it, and then I put it on from there. It's pretty easy to do. But those are all things, distributing those tasks is part of what we have to do to start the school year.
Will we, like, school board meetings next year, will they stream on that app? Or will that come via Facebook?
We'll plan on streaming using our YouTube page, as we have been this year. And then we can send out links through our app. You know, notifications, you get a notification, school board meeting seven o'clock, and it'll have the link to that.
And then, like, I know Remind is used a lot today. Does this have the functionality to set up groups like the school track?
It does. It is integrated completely with our student information system, Infinite Campus. So any group we have in Infinite Campus, we can then utilize and send through the app and notifications. Mr. Cecil's been part of some of those trainings with me, and that's stuff we still have to do, but it does have those capabilities, and it'll be really good for us. So the whole Remind, like you said, we are hopeful that we just aren't. We don't have to use that, and everyone has all their notifications from one place.
So the website, you can get it on the website, but you said the app, you have to buy the app?
You don't have to buy it. It's just where you go to get it. Yeah, it's free.
I thought you said you had to go to the store and buy it.
I did, I probably did, but it is free.
Okay, perfect.
I've had it on the phone for about a month now. Just kind of used to it.
A little construction update. These are the most recent renderings of the Gateway Project. Color schemes and all of that is done. So the colors here do represent where we're at. If you go out there now, you can start to see, this would be from the field side of it. You can see the difference in the elevations, right where this retaining wall and the Bulldogs will go, up to the steps. These are the gates coming in. This is the merchandise store here, our three concession stand windows. And then restrooms here, these will be panels where we can recognize donors for the field and so on. Kind of an aerial view where we have our A in there, and that'll be into the concrete. Side view. All of this is lit at night, as is the Bulldogs. That'll be pretty cool, like if you had a Friday night football game, something like that. You can see in the background, that is the softball press box, which I'll get to. There is the softball press box right there. The contingencies in our plan are for the Gateway and that part of the project. So this will be the last part completed, but we have more time to get that done. Our softball will be played on our current field this year, with this construction being finalized in the fall. There's a team room, it's actually right here. This is the door to the team room for our girls to go in, a place for them to change. They don't really have anywhere to do that there, so that'll be a nice addition for them.
Is that just for the home team?
It is just for the home team, yeah. Observation deck here. We could put media out there as well. It's coming along well? On target, on schedule? Just hopeful all materials, including steel, get here on time. Any questions on any of the pictures?
They have not, they can't change the cost of, of it, correct?
No, only if we, yeah, no, the bid we have is the bid. The only thing that could increase our price is if, eh, we don't want, we don't want to say like this, we want to put Torazo in there instead. You know, that would increase the price.
Pro by today, you can really see the form of the front, kind of where they're going to start.
The footings are all done for the building. You can go out and you can see those for sure. You can see these different elevations from up here to down here, and then the slope all the way down to the field. You can see all that now, for sure, so it's pretty neat.
Is it like grass, will they seed that, or is that like sod?
I would assume seed. Grass Masters is doing everything on the softball field. Okay. We've talked about a board retreat. We had the board retreat last year. I think that was great. That was great for, you know, the administrative team, as well as, I think, to organize our thoughts as a board and some of our visions, as well as our objectives, and being able to prioritize those things. If you think back to last year's retreat, we talked about communication, you know, like such as the app. We talked about facilities and with the Gateway and prioritizing, you know, accessible restrooms and handicapped accessibility through the complex. You know, those are the things that we took and put into the project. We talked about the Director of Teaching and Learning, all things that we were able to, you know, those ideas were really spurred upon in our retreat. So I do think it's very, very valuable. We wanted to throw out just a couple of dates, June second or third. Retreat early in the summer really allows for a lot of planning and for us to utilize our summer to organize those things. So again, it's nothing for a motion, but just something that we can kind of discuss, if those are possible dates or not possible dates. I even put some topics in there. Future staffing in the middle school, including Dean of Students, Laverne organizational, reorganizational plans, our youth service worker and therapist, some of the work that they'll be involved in. Our Director of Teaching and Learning report, kind of where she's at and where she started. A financial overview, as well as forecasting. And then future facility planning, ideas and objectives, and where we kind of go from here.
So yeah, I don't know if either one of those dates would work. I did ask Brett, maybe we could do the same thing as last year, if his wife was up for it.
Yeah, I haven't been home.
But he hasn't been home yet to really talk to her.
I enjoy hosting. I think we could do something similar, if we got the space to do it. Yes, close, if you guys are okay with that.
I thought it worked well. We could do something afterwards like you did, have spouses come out or kids. That's worked out well, too.
Jay can help me put pieces.
Yeah, I thought it was great watching you two cook.
I'd prefer Wednesday.
Is that Wednesday the third? Or the second?
That'd be the first date, yeah.
I could do either, but I can stay on Wednesday.
You help with the races, I know, on Thursdays, yeah. Just have to leave early if you do.
Do you think like after in order?
Yeah, what did we do last year, maybe one-thirty to, or maybe later than that?
Two to five, and then I think five.
Two to five, okay.
I think.
Well, we can finalize some stuff and send it out to everyone once we get some more details.
Wants to at least maybe kind of lock off or think about either one of those two dates.
Early June is real bad for me. Yeah, I mean, there's a, I mean, it's baseball season, I have three kids, you know, this year, so, but, well, I make them. It's not a good day.
Now, when I'm hearing baseball, especially you say three kids.
Wednesday's bad until like late afternoon. Probably start about three or three-thirty for pretty little bit of pressure. And I can do Thursday, I just have to leave at quarter to five. No, that's all right.
That's what we did last year, wasn't it?
Yeah, it was Thursday last year, Gloria, I remember, was there until.
I just left at the end.
Well, we want to focus in on the third, and then let us know if that doesn't work.
The third, which is, you said Wednesday's are bad. Jason said that, Anderson, Wednesday doesn't work, so Thursday, leave last.
Look at the third unless it truly doesn't work for you then. And I don't know if you've expressed that to the administrators, too, and they may have an idea of that date. Just another date on their calendar to add. All right, well, let's look at June third then, and maybe you are two to five. Gathering afterwards. That works great. So thank you again. Brett loves number doesn't. We'll find another spot if we need to. All right, anything else in the superintendent's report, Joe?
Nope, that is it.
All right, we'll move on. Then administrative report. Tonight, we have Mr. Cecil with us to talk about graduation.
Before I do, a quick thank you. May, as Mr. Carter mentioned, appreciation month, it seems. On behalf of the teachers and staff, they certainly appreciated the words and the goodies of last week, so thank you for that. But also, as we talk, I think it's been a phenomenal year. It's been a year of a lot of daily or weekly or minute-by-minute decisions based on all the guidance from our June to line August meetings till now. So certainly appreciate the board's trust, support, and guidance along our way. It has been a very fast year, surprisingly, maybe it hasn't been that fast, but as I said, we've been a very good year. With that, we're ready for graduation. So you have a list in front of you. We have ninety-nine seniors opposed to you, that you approve for graduation. Of course, as this meeting always goes, we're not quite done with them, so it will all be pending their completion of their second semester post work. We'll look to graduate ninety-nine this year.
And graduation is the twenty-third, right?
It is the twenty-third, and it's at two o'clock, and it is in the high school gymnasium.
And will that be streamed as well?
That will be streamed as well, yes. And from now on, the answer to all things is probably.
Yes.
Right, if we have the capabilities, we'll, we'll stream.
Sure.
A lot of good reviews and a lot of good that have come out of that this year, not just for this year, but a lot of people that can't make everything, the kids or grandkids, we had, so it's been.
Sure.
Well, we see it.
Anything else in your report before we go to approve?
Nothing more important than our seniors right now.
All right, well, it's in our new business. So we'll go to there, and we'll go right to that. As Mr. Cecil said, ninety-nine seniors to approve upon their total completion.
Most of you approve the list of ninety-nine seniors.
Thank you, Jay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Todd. Motion and second. Any further discussion? Hearing that, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations to the seniors. We'll look forward to seeing them walk across the stage.
I'll let them know, and they'll be happy to approve.
You bet. All right, be a new business appoint, a joint committee to continue studying the reorganization.
Last June, we passed a resolution to study reorganization with the Laverne District. Part of that process, we've entered into joint employment with the Laverne District. Heading into year two of that study, we need to create a joint committee. And that committee would involve people from the Algonquin District, as well as people from the Laverne District. You know, some of the things that we already currently are involved with the Laverne District, we do have a shared teacher leadership and compensation program. We have a shared staff through music, transportation, buildings and grounds. We have a shared instructional coach. We have a shared academic calendar. We have a shared Title IX program. Each district, starting next year, based upon the year one, will receive additional funding in point one oh times the number of certified students minus special education students. So there are incentives to look at these types of opportunities. In year two, the Department of Ed does expect us to appoint a reorganization committee. And that's what the motion is tonight, is to just appoint it, not the specifics of it, but that we will work to create the reorganizational committee between the two districts and continue to look at opportunities of reorganization.
Any questions? I think we're on a good path here to work with Laverne. All right, hearing that, this will need a motion for approval for the joint committee.
Make a motion to approve a joint committee?
Thank you. Andrea, do you have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Gloria. A motion and a second then, to approve a joint committee to continue to study reorganization. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Strength and conditioning coach.
Sorry, one question.
Yes.
When will we, the folks be appointed to that committee?
Over the summer, Mr. Heeser and I and Superintendent Laverne talked about starting to, you know, discuss it and candidates who would be good to have on it and probably put it together for the start of the next school year.
Does that come back again for approval of those, or since we approved vision, you just appoint them?
Yeah, we just appoint from here. Last month, we talked about the need in the district of a strength and conditioning coach, being able to frame some of the work and development of our kids through our weight room. We've continued those discussions on the possible addition of a strength and conditioning coach. We have contacted some other districts who have that, models that they use. And we've created kind of an essential responsibilities and secondary responsibilities, basically a job description somewhat of the position. You know, I think we focused on, you know, the essential roles would be to provide the in-season strength and conditioning workouts for our teams, you know. So if you use the fall, for example, they would provide the in-season workouts for our football team and our cross-country team and our swimming team and our volleyball team. Be present, organize those along with the coaching staffs of those teams, and create the workouts and the programming that we have throughout all of our teams. Secondary responsibilities would be the offseason students. They would still organize and create those workouts. We're hopeful that we can continue to look at in-school PE, for example, opportunities for some of those kids. We know we won't have eight periods of strength and conditioning in PE next year, but we might start to be able to offer some additional periods of PE that could capture some of those students who aren't in-season.
So do they, if it is a PE class, do they have to have a teaching certificate then to do this? Or would?
Yeah. Well, we would use our PE instructors. Again, the programming would come from our strength and conditioning coach, but our PE teachers, it would be their class. Yeah. That's a good question.
So this individual would not necessarily have to be present during the day?
Yeah, correct. The primary, you know, that essential responsibilities, those would be those six workouts in-season. Those would occur in the morning after school. That's their primary responsibility. Establishing the programming for the other kids would be secondary. During the day, they wouldn't necessarily need to be here. It depends on, you know, we don't, this is not a position, full-time position. You know, this would be a stipend position for someone to do in addition to what maybe their other job is. So very likely, they wouldn't be here during the day. I do think this would provide, you know, consistency for our athletes. This would mean that a child who's in volleyball is going to have the same opportunities to develop as a child who's in basketball or track or cross-country, or whatever it is. And that's something I think we, it's tough for us to do right now, is to provide that consistent approach to how do we develop our kids, as well as making that environment a place that is beneficial and is efficient in working with our kids. I do think this would be something that would bring a lot of excitement, energy, and would be very, very valuable to our kids.
I view this position to our athletic department as the same as our teaching and learning person is to our educational. You know what I mean? It's coordination of everything, and so.
I agree with you, Todd, I do. You know, I don't, there's people out here, people out there who could do a great job in this. If this was something that we approved tonight, we would advertise it. But I think we would commit as a district to making sure we had the right person to do this work. And if that person's there, that's awesome. That's a great thing for our kids. If it's not, we'll have to look until we find the right person to do this work.
Well, as you stated, we talked about it last, and put together a preliminary job description last month, or you brought it to us, and now we've got that. So our next logical step is to look at recommending the addition of the strength and conditioning coach to our district. So what are we?
Where are you looking?
I was just going to say monetarily wise, I mean, what?
That's my question.
Yeah, we've talked about a stipend of ten thousand dollars, and we arrive at that as, you know, two head coaching stipends. That's about what you would. coaching stipends, that's about what you would be. You know, they would put in that type of time, you know, after school, before school, during the school year. I think if we went beyond that, then we might have to look at additional, but I think a $10,000 stipend for our strength and conditioning coach is what we've discussed.
Further questions?
Under the qualifications, the background in related coaching area, is that a background in all the areas then?
Well, they'd be coaching, strength and conditioning here. So I think a background in that area.
In that area, okay. I didn't know if you meant background in volleyball and softball and football and...
Right.
Like a personal trainer would be somebody that is.
Sure. Yeah.
So as we're forecasting this position in the future, do you see maintaining the current timelines? Do you see increasing timelines over this five-year thinking process? What's your process?
Increasing timelines for?
If we're hiring this person at X number hours per year, do you anticipate that staying the same for five years, increasing timelines, additional hours? What's your?
I think it would, I think it would, this is what I, we envision. What we hope is to build, you know, from that to, you know, those essential responsibilities of the six workouts in-season. It's that other time that we think we need to grow. So what I mean by that is opportunities for our kids, maybe in PE for strength and conditioning, additional opportunities for our kids, you know, in the morning for out-of-season people. And that would come from our staff. You know, that's not in addition to this staff. So I don't see their time spent growing from what we've drawn it up to this point. I think growing our development of kids as a district and as a program needs, will occur from it and needs to occur.
Any further questions or discussion? Okay. If we're all kind of in agreement or would like to look at recommending the strength and conditioning coach to our district, we need a motion for that.
Oh, motion. Create a position of a strength and conditioning coach.
Okay. We do have a motion to add the addition of the strength and conditioning coach to our district. Do we have a second?
Second, yeah.
Jay seconds it. Any further discussion?
And just like finances, I mean, this is sustainable based on your forecast and against five.
It is.
I know, I'm just asking the question.
Yeah, it's a good question. It's a really good question to ask and it is sustainable. You know, we have extras built into all of our forecasts, including extra positions. There's no question, this is something that can be sustained.
Okay.
I just, I think it's important for our student athletes, but we talked a little bit last time too, one of our district goals that we, you know, is health and wellbeing. You know, this is a position I think can be grown. And kids need to leave here knowing how to take care of their bodies and be healthy. You know, if we can implement this in PE and maybe a resource for our staff and anything like that too that are interested in getting healthier. So I guess great.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none then? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to number nine in the North Central Consortium Agreement.
The consortium agreement is something that we enter into every year. We are part of the North Central Consortium, which is a school that serves students in grades third through 12th with significant behavior needs. It could be an IEP, special education, or it could be just a general education student. Manson Northwest Webster School District is the flow-through agent for the consortium. Up to this point, before this year, our district has paid $5,000 a year for facilities. That comes out of our PEPAL funding. Then we also pay $28,000 for the educational cost. If that $28,000 isn't used, then we get it back. It's just their cash, what creates their cash on hand through the district. The consortium does have a problem right now with they don't have enough cash on hand to get them far enough along in the school year. So they've created tiers based on the number of students you have in your district, not on the number of students who go there. So our upfront cost is $55,000 rather than 28. Again, that's not of a concern to us financially because if we use it, then we use it. If we don't, we get it all back anyway. It just creates more flow-through dollars for them in their school year. So I would recommend the approval of the consortium as we have done in the past, but with the increased upfront cost of $55,000. Again, if we don't use that, we get all of those dollars back. If we do use it, then it's, it would be our cost anyway.
How many schools are in this one?
Twenty-four, something like that, quite a few, ranging from very big to very, very small, which is why they created the tier based on, based on those enrollment. You know, typically, the $28,000 is probably pretty close to what we spend. You know, I don't think we get refunds very often from them. So to give you an idea of what we typically spend, and that can simply vary from year to year.
And there still is current $5,000 more?
$5,000 facility fee stays the same.
Okay. If you don't get that back, obviously.
You do not.
Is this the general ed or the special ed budget then that this would?
General education.
General, okay. Any further questions?
Yeah, we probably could, some of that special education, yeah, yeah. It would be, it could end up being both.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right.
I'll make a motion to approve the NCCS consortium agreement.
Okay. Thanks, Andrew. Do we have a second?
Second motion.
Okay, thank you, Tom. Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Moving on, they're approving some lunch rates for next year.
Lunch rates, the USDA did approve free lunch again for next year, as they did for this year. So this is a motion that has two parts to it. In case that would go away at some point next year, we would need to have our rates accordingly. The other part is if we went two years and didn't do anything to our lunch rates, then we would have to raise them a bunch when we start back in a regular situation anyway. So we're really just trying to keep pace. What we did is we added a dime to all of those. There's a calculator that the federal government provides us that says what these rates have to be anyway. That calculator doesn't exist this year with them providing the lunch. So we just went 10 cents, which is very, very close to what it would normally be anyway. So all of these are an increase of 10 cents, except for this to be determined, which would be like the adult lunch fee, because that is set on July 1st by the USDA, because that's not reimbursable.
Our communications to parents will be sure to mention that this is not, that our school district does, so that when we take it off, we're not saying, we don't think that's us doing it.
I think that is important. It also, you know, something else that happened, free and reduced applications were down significantly this year, as you would expect them with lunch being free. However, free and reduced rates also generate dollars for us. Luckily, the federal government, they realized that and let us go back to free and reduced rates previously. So it's very, very important for us in the registration process that we encourage our families to fill those out as they have before, because the numbers are what is important to us, not necessarily receiving, you know, a free or reduced lunch, because everyone will. So that's something we need to work hard at to spread that message as well.
Good questions. Any further questions? So you said something about two-part, but this is just need a motion.
Just needed a motion, yeah.
All right, we need a motion then to approve the 21, 22 lunch rates.
I think a motion to approve lunch rates for fiscal year 2022.
Thank you, Tom. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Brian. We have a motion and a second then. Any further questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Looking at setting fees for the 21, 22.
Yeah. Looking at approving our fees, if you can see that table, there is the highlighted colored ones, those are ones that are changed. So the far left-hand column, 2021, 2022, right here, the only thing that has changed is what you guys just approved, the lunch. We kept everything else the same for this year, ranging from our technology and textbook fees in the high school, all the way down through activity tickets, band and vocal fees, percussion fees, uniform and band lessons. Looking at our expenses, Mary Beth and I did that. We were okay to leave them the same. I think this is a good year to leave your fees where they are and we can afford to.
I've always wondered, I know this would hurt our athletic budget, but I've always thought, you know, you want kids here. Am I, are there any districts that don't charge activity admission prices to students?
I don't know if there is. I don't know of any. You're right in what you said, it would, it would cause a, you know, your activity budget is what would be impacted here, including, you know, band vocal and everything else. So it would be significant funds lost. We would have to find a way to recoup those. You know, I think there's probably an argument to be made that to use general funds to recoup those, maybe that's not a great idea either, so.
You know what I mean? I mean, it's just, I know people that are going to want to be there and $60 probably to most families is not a huge deal, but it's, it is something and it's just, you know, I want kids to be able to be there.
Yeah.
Not feel like they have to sneak in or spend their money or...
Right.
What's the normal class to get in? Because isn't it better to get an activity ticket than to pay each time?
Yeah, our adult rate is five and our student rate is, are we at four for that? Three or four?
Yeah, that sounds about right. I know it's rated five for adults, so I imagine students, it's a little less.
Yeah, I mean, I don't want to make a big point out of it, but I've always been one that's just, gosh, you know, whatever we do to help out kids to get here would be great.
Yeah, I think.
Any idea how much is generated off the student? I think I've asked one time and it was, I think it's like $10,000 to $12,000.
I would say that's probably accurate, yeah.
If you tied that to opening up some sort of discount for kids that were on free or reduced lunches, what's happening, is it 50%? What would it be at?
All of these would be open to free and reduced, except for the activity ticket. The rest of these, there is a free and reduced rate for all of them.
Gotcha.
Just a thought, I just always just...
Yeah. And the reason the activity ticket would not is because really what you're selling there is admission to events. The rest of them are all involved in activities.
I guess I don't know if we know if there's kids not able to attend that would, you know.
I think to be mindful of it, I think is probably most important, be mindful of our fees on an annual basis and how they impact our budgets and how it impacts our families and finding a balance between those two things. And that's certainly what our discussion was when we looked at it this year.
Well, I think we talked in the past years, we always like to keep them the same. If there's a going to be an increase, we would like to know.
Yeah.
Why we need that, otherwise we would just assume, keep them as low as possible.
Yeah.
So we're continuing trying to do that, so. Any other further questions? Hearing none then, we need a motion to set the fees for the 21, 22 school year.
I need a motion to set the fees for the 21, 22 school year of the year plan.
Thank you, Andrew. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thanks, Gloria. Do we have a motion and a second? Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have a couple recordings of a scoreboard to consider.
Yeah, remember last year, we had started a discussion on a new scoreboard with the new field and the project. We prioritized, the board did, of making sure that we had ADA compliance and handicap-accessible restrooms and putting those other things first. And I think that was a really good decision and we've been able to accomplish those things with the Gateway Project. So going back to the scoreboard discussion, Mr. Jacobson has met with Daktronics about the video board for the football field and track. I think it would be a wonderful addition to our facilities. We've done some great things down there and this would be, you know, one of the final pieces for our outdoor facilities. We have been able to save some significant PEPAL dollars, the replacement of our high school air handler unit, as well as some future air handler units. So this is something we can afford. What I would recommend is that we look at putting $50,000 of PEPAL upfront and then paying $20,000 of PEPAL for four years. And that would make it so what we currently are selling in our ads, that would cover the rest of it. Nothing has to be done in addition to that. However, this does create a revenue source for us through the sales of ads and commercials and these, on this rendering up here, founding partners and anchor partners. This is the better rendering to see some of that.
How much did we budget for the air handler units that now we're able to fund out at Esser?
$175 just on this year.
This year, yeah.
And now we were able to use Esser dollars on all that?
Correct. And then we probably have 50 to 100 over the next two each year, so it's significant.
Are they two a little bit different or?
They are. This one, this one is, this part right here is fixed, maybe like a regular scoreboard, and this part is fixed. This is all video. So there's more video. This is the one I think that is probably a better option. You would have anchor partners down here, so that could be a business in town who, if they wanted their name up there, as well as commercials, you know, your track system can be tied to this. There are schools that run like student movie nights, run that through here and they can watch the movie from the football field. It's kind of cool, like a drive-in theater, so pretty. Looking at it, I'm not sure, putting it down at this end is great. I think it needs to go back to where the one currently is.
Was it the track meet the other night, looking in the sun, can't even see it?
Yeah, you would have to look into the sun. I think it's, and it just, it's a tough fit. Also, you know, we've, you know, worked really, really hard to create that gateway and create that area, you know, we should be able to see the video from it, you know. So putting it down at the other end is probably a better fit for that.
We put all the conduit and everything in there, correct, or?
Yeah, well, down at the other end, the conduit's there. So that one is a really simple piece, but we did run kind of down here. We wouldn't have to flip our play clocks. This play clock right here has not only the play clock, but the time on it. So you always want that opposite your scoreboard. So we wouldn't have to flip those around if we put it down to where the current one is.
So tonight, we need to, do we need to approve just which one or kind of let that be up to the, I suppose, there's a cost difference, so.
Yeah, it's 25,000. I think this is the one to go with. What we would need tonight is a motion to use PEPAL dollars of 50,000 upfront and the 20,000 for four years.
And I think we've got the Wi-Fi and the video, everything's okay down there?
Yeah, it'll all be, that'll all be part of that, yeah. It'll all be, that'll all be part of that, yeah. The sound is also in this, in this one here.
And as we talked, I know we were looking at this for stage two, and this is part of the stage two project, as we talked about last year.
It does.
Completes it.
It will, but they would tell you with the technology of the LED in this, that the sun shining on it does not have an impact on how it displays.
So it's better to have the sun shining on it than looking into the sun?
The way our field sits, I think now, yeah, because otherwise, you're kind of looking directly into it to see it. It would look great when the night, you know, when it's completely dark, but really, we have a lot of events that aren't like that, you know?
It's like, boy, it could be one of six of one half dozen of another.
I just think a gateway would be a disaster.
And I think we want people to be able to see it from our gateway.
Well, you're at one, and you'd be on the opposing side, maybe, and you'd be able to see the whole gateway and half the project, you'd be looking through the scoreboard.
Yep.
And I think you said, this would be linked to the track thing, so that would...
It would, yeah. It'll post the times. That was one of the things, one of the reasons we wanted to move down here, so on the start-finish line, you have the track times. Well, Mr. Jacobson's looked into those. We can have that at the start-finish line on a one-line display, you know, so you'll still see the time, but then it's also going to be on there, on the times placing lanes and names, so kind of get it both ways. And those are all integrated together.
All good questions. Do we have any further discussion? As Joe mentioned, we need to have a motion then to approve the use of $50,000 upfront, and then $20,000 for four years for the purchase, approve of a scoreboard.
So...
Thank you, Andrew. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
Encourage any talent at high school, or any adult or high school student or anything that wants to be creative and help us with incident, if we decide to do incident replay or anything like that, it'd be great to see some of those kids get into some of that stuff.
Yeah, there's...
Really work with it, do a lot better job, it's always a little bit...
Yeah. Daktronics actually has some curriculum if you want to use it to work in their program that works with the video board.
Okay, any other further discussion? Hearing done then? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Open enrollment.
We have two open enrollment applications for students into the district, and then we also have two open enrollment applications for a family out. This is a family who, they have never attended school in our district, and then the family moved. They want to continue to attend where they always have, so it makes sense. So I do recommend all four of these applications.
We need a motion then for the open enrollments.
Making a motion to approve the open enrollment applications.
Thank you, Tom. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, thank you. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing done? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. New contracts.
We have a couple additional volunteer ones that we put on, but first, Brittany Hoover for middle school physical education. Brittany is a Algonah native and a high school graduate, so we're really excited for her. Cameron Etherington as a volunteer softball coach, and then Tyler Lighting and Blake Elsbecker as volunteer boys' basketball coaches.
Looks like Mr. Cecil's recruiting. Okay, any further discussion? We need a motion then?
Motion approved, new contract.
Thank you. Almost went by that. Need a second.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Look at the resignations now.
We have three resignations this month. Holly Waltz from our math count sponsor, Valerie McMahon from middle school teacher associate, and Jennifer Christensen from the third grade PLC leader. No.
No.
I think that was too late to put in here.
All right. All right, we have the resignations there. Any questions or discussions? All right, hearing done then? We need a motion.
Making a motion to approve the resignation.
All right, thanks, Lori. We need a second.
I'll second.
Thanks. Brent, we have a motion and a second to approve the resignations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Well, we're at that point. Again, I'd just like to thank everyone for the board appreciation we received tonight. Thank you again to everybody, and thanks to the teachers. I hope they enjoyed their teacher appreciation week, because we surely appreciated them and everything they've done this year. Definitely a different year, so... Need a motion for adjournment.
Motion to adjourn.
Thank you. We need a second. We have a motion and a second. We are adjourned.